Number sixteen, special meeting on policy roll call. Karen Hornell.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Kate Gallos.
Here.
Carla Inge Process here. Chris Robinson will be a little bit late, but we'll be in very shortly. If you would like to say this pledge of allegiance, you can just hang there at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Onto item one D, agenda group. What's your first agenda? All favor, item all right, the agenda is approved. Item two A is for public comment. There appears to be no one here at all. Is there anyone online who wishes to make any public comments, Anna?
No, I do not believe that there is.
Okay. Moving on to three A, the meat of our meeting, policy updates. Yeah. Um. We need to move. Uh, let's ask Anna. Are we going to go through the policies one at a time like we did last time?
Uh, yes. We just won.
Should we just wait for you to join us over here or? Haven't been listening. Okay, great, yeah, right, okay. Uh, I think we are starting with policy five seven seven one. Remember, we got a ways through it and then. So I am putting up the policies.
I'm terribly sorry, I'm having to try to use two different places here.
Hi, print in line.
You sent them to us though. I don't believe I touched on this.
No, I have it on my computer, but I haven't written down.
Yeah, I would say, um, in order to review the policies, if it's, um, I did provide sort of an outline of the changes that were going to take place in the policy, but I think it would probably be helpful to also log into the policies via the Neola website just to make sure that we're reading all of the extracted changes that are there.
You mean our board docs, right?
In board docs, yes, yes.
I have access.
Yeah.
Hi, Chris. Come sit next to me. Chris Robinson is in the house and so now we have our full school board here.
Okay.
We are just getting started.
Is there anyone who is having difficulty at all getting into the policies?
I'm going to share. Okay. You can.
Not looking at that yet.
I was able to get into your policies.
So you're going to go to policies, draft, and then you want to go for ready for review thirty-three dash two.
Five seven seven one. All right. All right, so we are now all on the same page and our goal is, if we can, get through to eight six eight oh and then we're done with this latest round of policy reviews, right? All right.
All right, so this particular policy is one that we looked at the last time and I know that there were some, um, concerns around adjusting some of the language around the gendered language that was in it. So, um, uh, one of the wonderings that I have is that there's, if there's the ability to just strike some of those areas out, right? Um, and if we want to take a look at those areas to think about, because I don't know that there needs to be a reference to gender at all with, after listening to the conversation that we had the last time regarding this particular policy.
The only question I would have about that is thinking in terms of living beyond this administration. Want to somehow have a phrase that would be adults within the student is someone.
The only concern with that is if you're in a situation where you might have to search, I don't know that a student is going to always.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if we're thinking about the severity of what that search could entail, like if we're thinking about something that could cause harm to others.
Right.
I want to, we want to make sure we can act in a way that's going to keep our student population and staff safe. Yeah.
So. Thing right here, right?
You struck the what's in red of the policy, but the gendered language lives right above it too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the striking is what Neola put in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No, I did not strike that, that's what Neola had in there.
That if the great search of students' persons or personal belongings shall be conducted in the presence of another staff member by and in a manner that is minimally intrusive to the student based on the reasonable suspicion justified search and take out any reference to gender.
So I guess the question that I would have, a person, a student's person or intimate belongings? Um, I, I'm not sure how they're defining intimate belongings. There's a concern I would have around policy that doesn't protect our students from feeling like there's an overreach of search and seizure either.
Yeah.
Um.
Could you strike intimate? If it had to be intimate, I would.
That's right.
Right. I would.
No, and I don't want staff members to.
Then we'd need to strike intimate and language that indicates at what point. I don't think so because I don't think you, well, I don't know, that might be more practice, like for public in the handbook or procedures where you try to, I don't know, it seems like my research might be true of that policy. There might be a.
Present personal belongings. Are you thinking that you would take our, our, you hear back to Neola or?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so what ends up?
Have to vote on it today.
Okay.
On this one.
Well, what?
Would you like us to?
So there's.
We can reach.
Yeah, there's two different ways that we can approach this. We can, we can work through these policies tonight with your recommended changes. I can bring them back to you with the changes that we've, that we would, you would like me to take to Neola. And then once you approve them, then they would go to Neola for, to be updated within our system.
That's the other easy, like easier.
The, the one, the one way that I would suggest doing this is probably working through them tonight because if there are recommended changes that you have legal concerns on, I can run them by Neola before bringing them back to you.
Okay, so then, then they would be in consent, right?
Yes.
They are.
Yes, yes. So to me, it would make sense for us to walk through this. We talk about recommended changes. I propose those recommended changes. If I get, okay, there's no legal, like major legal concerns around that from Neola, then we can proceed forward. Um, we did approve that first section because there weren't many changes there. So there may just be like two policies that we want to extract that are not part of a consent agenda and bring back. Okay.
I would propose that you strike that sentence and instead of person of the student's gender reflect to the principal or an available administrator language in the presence of another staff member. Strike of the same gender. Yep. And in a manner, and then keep the rest.
So then it would read, if I've got this right, the search of a person's. Uh, a search of a student's person or personal belongings shall be conducted by an available administrator or principal.
Yep.
In the presence of another staff.
Yep.
And in a manner that's. Right. That, that works for me. That's just very straightforward. And then Chris, you want to?
Yeah, I had another gender issue here. It's further up under student person and possessions, first paragraph. Um, last sentence, the first paragraph, the extent of the search will be governed by the seriousness of the suspected infraction, the student's age and gender, and I didn't think gender belonged in there.
Yeah, I, I would take that.
That's so weird. And student's disciplinary history, is that also, I mean?
That brought stuff to school before.
You know, you're saying that that place is.
Yes. It does. Life is not full of clean slaves, unfortunately. You know what I mean? It has a. A subitually contraband or something. It does change the.
Sure, I guess, but I think the extent of the search just being governed by the seriousness of the suspected infraction is a. But it's discretion. I would, I'm not, I'm not, I don't care.
But I know what she's saying, like. I'm gonna, well, the way you could spin it is like disciplinary history might reflect bias and who's being disciplined and why I'm looking at this kid and saying, this is serious because by you've done it before. Right, so if bias is built into disciplinary history, then, and that, that's actually a really interesting point. What do you think about that?
Um, I do think there is some merit to that. Um. I do, yeah.
I mean, I just, I think, I think you wouldn't be able to prevent it from being a relevant factor. It wouldn't, it couldn't justify the serious search alone without other relevant circumstances and having a reasonable suspicion of a suspected infraction.
So, yeah, so I think about it and I try to like position, like position. So I'm positioning myself in the stance of looking at it from the lens of the student who is having the search conducted, right? And I see there's value in that and then I have to also position myself in the lens of thinking about every other parent who knows if there's suspected history. Like, should that, should that require action on behalf of a staff member to ensure the safety of everyone?
If you have a relevant disciplinary history, so like if, yeah, they get attention a lot, like that doesn't justify a seizure, but if there's history relevant to the, to the search. Well, again, it's not the hell I'm gonna die on. I would suggest striking it. I think it falls under other relevant circumstances or information, but you have to prove how it's relevant. You have to link the relevance to the seriousness infraction, to the, the severity of the search. You don't just get to point at someone's.
That's right.
You're a bastard.
And now I get to do.
Right, and I do think there is a layer of protection that that provides. I would think if you had relevant suspicion of a student who had something that would require a search and seizure that to me, at that point in time, it wouldn't matter who the student was, it's relevant, right? To, to make sure that everyone's safe as a building level administrator.
Yeah.
I would not feel uncomfortable striking that to try to eliminate bias.
What do you think, Mark?
Cause I. Gender history still later?
Dialogue, open and clear dialogue, bringing us all around consensus. I love it. All right, so any other comments about this particular policy? Are there any other?
We just stipulate that any gender representation. Yes.
Yeah, just, just on a cursory read of some of the new policies, there are, there is gendered language within a lot of the policies that we would probably want to keep a full eye on as we're reviewing. Um, I've, just in looking some things up, have noticed that that is something that could just be shifted. It's an easy shift.
So do you want us to be voting right now to adopt this policy?
Well, she want, you wanna check with Neola because of the.
Yep.
So you're gonna check.
Oh, so we're not gonna vote on anything? No. We're revising everything, right? And then she's going to take it to Neola and then we go to the consent agenda. Got it.
Yeah, if, if we have concerns about legality, I mean, if they're just little edits, yeah. This one I would want to just double check to see if we're missing something with, with those two. I'm not concerned about the gender component, but I am concerned a little bit about the history. Like if there, there may be some legal cases that would point to us wanting to keep that in that I'm not thinking through right now, but I would like to hear what those are.
Bring, bring me there.
Yep, yep. All right.
Okay.
So five seven seven one would be the extraction of intimate, the presence of an administrator observed by another staff member and the removal of gender and then striking gender and disciplinary history in paragraph one sentence, last sentence.
Okay. Right.
All right, next one is policy six four two three, use of credit cards. No concerns? Okay.
Should we just vote to adopt this one then, right now, or? Comments, please.
Again.
Did we just go ahead and turn, just do it? Turn, is there a motion?
If you do adapt and revise policy six four two three.
I second. All favor.
Hi.
Um, yeah, I'm recording right now. So Karen motioned at six twenty-three, Danielle's second. All in favor? Okay. All right. The next policy that we are going to be taking a look at is policy seven five four zero point zero five, which is assistive technology and services. Um, the policy was updated to address new technology being used with certain students as a way to communicate with them and monitor their location and behavior. Um, the example they provide in here is Angel Sense.
I have crowdfunding on here.
Crowdfunding, we already approved.
We already, yeah.
Yeah, we already approved that one. Um, yep.
All right, we're on assistive.
Yep. Um. The, basically, the, the background on this is that as technologies become more prevalent, Neola anticipates further need to address their usage. So at this time, the primary concern is the communication component, particularly as it relates to communication from the device to a parent or other location outside of the school. Um, and so the present concerns for student confidentiality. The policy update reflects the expectation that such functionality will be disabled during school unless expressly provided for within the student's IEP.
And then. And then unfortunately, I got my hands on this policy and, but.
I actually thought your edits were really good.
Yeah, okay, thank you. It seems like it was a policy that was written with respect to IEPs and then slowly got expanded, but badly well written in those expansions. And I like the idea of universalizing it because I really love the reference to students who may not have IEPs but who still need assistive devices, in which case the whole policy can be written from a universal perspective. Um. So I, I don't know, Anna, have you had a chance to?
Yep, I have your edits right here in front of me right now.
So I, I just went at it, you know?
Yep.
I, I'm not vocal to any of this, but I wanted us to think about making it a universal policy, one aspect of which is IP requirements. Um, so that was the perspective I brought.
All right, and so just, I want to take a look at those components of the, um, policy that, um, the, that Neola is suggesting specifically around, um, the way, the two-way communication. So this, a point in here, you have assistive technology used in conjunction with the students. Okay, so you would like to potentially remove this.
Well, um, the green language that they added.
Yeah, you said unless the green above is legally mandated, I would replace to universalize it as follows. Assistive technology shall be used with external communication or recording function disabled except as provided for in a student's IP five or four other established rules for usage for a student without an IP or five or four plan.
Right, so I'm making it broader because if we're gonna have that limit for students with IEPs, we should have it for anyone who has the device. So that's, so I'm, I'm actually expanding it to, for not just IP students, but anyone who might qualify in our reckoning.
Right, which allows us to potentially open the door to assistive technology used beyond, um, just students with disabilities or five or four. Right, makes sense.
Probably happens any.
Yes, it does.
You know, so why, why not build it into the policy?
Yep.
So on the Neola piece, I'm just suggesting making it a little broader.
Yep.
And then on everything else, I'm just suggesting taking out some of the ableist language and, um, you know, students with disabilities have special challenges. I mean, I was just triggered right from the first sentence, you know? Yes, yes, and, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um. So I, I don't know, do you all like the? It's good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is one you probably need to run by Neola.
Yep, I think it would be important for me to run it by them, but I do, I, I am not in disagreement with the recommended changes because it allows us to service all students better.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Great.
So I will be taking policy five six, oh, sorry, seven five four point zero five forward with, um, to Neola for review and then bring back to the board in a subsequent meeting for approval with the recommended changes as proposed by Carla.
You. You'll use, I think it's one.
Right. All right, the next policy is, uh, seven five four four, which is the use of social media. Um, the policy was updated by Neola to provide additional language to address the continuously involving environment of social media and the potentially dangerous circumstances in which school staff interact with students through social media and related forms of communication. Um, and this includes things like athletic team apps, like there's, um, some apps that teachers might use to communicate with students. Um, so there is a selection of options that are recommended. So if you want to jump into that policy and look at those recommended options. Um, clearly, um. It says here, the district is committed to protecting the privacy rights of students, parents, guardians, staff and volunteers, board members and other individuals on district-approved social media sites. District employees and volunteers are prohibited from posting or releasing confidential information about students. Employees, volunteers or district operations through social media without appropriate consent. And this would be express written consent from the parent of a student, the affected employee or volunteer, or the district administrator concerning district operations. And this would include the following, identification of a student in any social media post, publication and/or social media post from the district to be approved by the parent in advance. Any postings by district employees that identify students must be inconsistent with the policies twelve thirteen, thirty-two thirteen and forty-two thirteen, under student supervision and welfare.
So if I'm understanding this, this policy allows us to post pictures of students if they aren't identified? Now, we have, does the district have a release from parents that required, that that's required?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So every school year as part of the registration process, parents agree to social media or, or use on the website. And, um, then we contain, we hold a no photos list in both schools that is monitored to make sure that any of those students who are on those no photo lists are not there. And then basically, if we come across a photo of a student on the no photo list, we may do an individual reach out to that parent because sometimes people just check the wrong box and they don't mind. So we would make that reach before posting.
Does this change anything really about our practices?
Not really.
What does identify, so now I'm thinking, what does identification of student mean? Does it mean their face exists? Well, or does it mean providing their name?
I think this means, uh, yeah, like unidentified.
Yeah.
So.
So if they go recognition of the mere existence of the face on the screen is identification.
We aren't identifying them.
Yeah.
So I would think this would pertain to those that's on the district now.
Well, we, so we have an extra layer because we said, we asked, didn't want to even be like.
Practices.
No, I guess I'm just trying to, so if, let, let's say there's a science fair and kids win the science fair, you can't put the, we'll give the participants in science fair, this person did this, this person did this.
That's right.
Team did this. Is this saying you can't do that at all without their permission?
Without, not without permission.
Not, not.
Right, so for example, if you were to have won the science fair, if I'm going to use your image and say Chris Robinson won first place at the science fair, I would need permission in order to be able to make that post.
Other than the permission that was already blanked and given?
I believe that that is what this is saying, is that any of the, that if.
Second layer of permission.
That's right, it's a second layer of permission around identification of student by name. Um, I know typically we use, um, we don't use first and last.
There, facing that.
So I think.
I just saw them, why?
Typically, we do not use first and last name when we, when we post those things, but I think in order to protect students, we would want to get permission prior to posting those names.
So this sounds like this would be a policy that would be interpreted in your employee handbook.
Yep.
To make sure that that's.
Yep, and, and I think also interpreted in our, our, um, student and family handbook so that parents understand and our teachers also understand some of those obligations around protecting student privacy.
So am I hearing any opposition and edits to this policy? I have a question for the fridge, but can I say it in that? I had to go, an eye rash on the fridge.
Yeah.
Oh, they're right, that's fine, it's a, it's an invisible fridge. I think about like, um, when we take video of like winter performances or schools, you know, things like that and are we prevented from sharing those out because I, I imagine there are students who have like a death photo, you know, like, is that why we don't share those out anyway? But yeah, that's not a good check.
Yeah, it's, it's directly related to this. One of the things that we typically try to, like, and we can look at, you know, with an orchestra, like, within an orchestra performance, who's present, we can see if they're on the no photo list. It's very few students in both schools. Um, I know one of the key things that we try to seek is, um, pictures that feature our kids, maybe from like a side or back too, and making sure that those, um, particular students aren't featured. And there are some, there can be safety reasons for that for some families to not have them. And so, um, yeah, we do need to look at all of those pieces, look at those no photo lists, and yes, that would be prohibitive of us posting that, that.
That's very good, videotaped and. Anyway, all right, so this is.
They'll do the DVD to families after the.
That I don't know off the top of my head, but I would.
I know stuff used to do and then they didn't do it for a while.
Yeah, and I know, um, Ms. Miracle oftentimes will give, um, highlighted performance pieces out directly to those parents of students involved, like she'll share clips and things like that. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So we could adopt this tonight?
I forgot a CD that she's probably.
Yeah.
I move to, uh, adopt a policy seven five four four as revised. Second.
All favor.
Hi.
If you have any that I've seen.
Who seconded?
All right.
Okay. All right. All right, the next policy that we're going to be taking a look at is, um, student mental health services. Um, the policy is revised to account for the delivery of mental health services using virtual platforms in addition to face-to-face onsite delivery. Um, language is also added to reference coordination between the delivery of student mental health services with students' IEP programming requirements. Um, so that would mean that we would be able to, in the policy, be able to have students access virtual appointments and things like that via technology.
Right. And then I shared with everyone I have. You know, I just, again, I pulled it, Carla, and I'm gonna add it. Um. I don't know, does anyone else have comments or thoughts about this policy? So, uh. See my. Main concern, so I had a couple of main concern in the paragraph that says student services shall maintain information regarding community-based and other types of mental health resources. And it includes the, it includes the phrase, um, available for students who require more intensive services or who suffer from more acute or chronic conditions. I would like to delete that and just say that the information is available under best rest. Because I think anyone, anyone should be able to access information about influence. So, or without having to reach an acute stage first. So to me, I, I think that change also makes it consistent with our. So to me, I, I think that change also makes it consistent with our practices in this district. With our SELT, which does not limit its distribution of information to. Students.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I had word edits that I don't. Care about all that much.
Uh, the may with consent, um, anytime we're talking to a provider based on HIPAA, we would have to have written consent from. Yeah, I mean, it's. I mean, we can say it in the policy, it's just, it's not gonna happen without that consent.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I just, I, I wasn't sure it needed to be there.
Yeah.
Um. And then another edit I thought was in.
Um.
Oh, you know, I, I wondered about the mandatory reporting language. Whether we could just. Refer back to the policies on mandatory reporting. Instead of including any new or fresh language here. So here in my documents, it's the next paragraph. It, it was a weird sentence, it, the sentence has Neola has it is, "Any staff member who went into force of providing. Mental health services to a student shall report any circumcise like." It's not really a sentence, so. I thought we should edit that and then just refer to. The other policies on mandatory. Yeah, there should maybe be a "who" here, right? There's where they, oh. Yeah. So I wanna edit it to read, "Any staff member who learns of circumstances giving rest of suspicion, yada, yada." I would just say. I mean, I, I admit that I would just say, "Any staff members who provide. Mental health services to a student, any staff member who provides mental health services to a student is subject to, must comply with the requirements of policies. You know, eighty-four sixty-two, as well as all mandatory reporting." I, I, it's possible I'm missing something and shorting it that way, but that seems to be like a clean statement. For providing mental health services, you have to comply with mandatory. But I, I'm. I'm worried I brought something that seemed like. With that change. Well, it's why I look.
Mm-hmm.
Say that like, it's very clumsy.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And. Next question was about. Um. I thought it was another clumsy phrase where it said, actually, it's above the mandatory reporting. "Services provided by or coordinated by student services shall be available to students who participate only on a voluntary basis." Does that make sense to everyone else? That wasn't quite true.
I think with saying that the district, can I tell them?
Is that what? No, we can't.
And that comes through?
Yeah.
That makes sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, which. Yeah, okay. Um. Oh, right, so you, you've already answered my concern about subpart D. Basically, it's a given, parent has consent, so we don't need to say it here. That's it, you guys, you guys can see what I did, right? You had a, yeah, I'll let you do it. So I thought we could just make it better in a few ways like that, and I got, I'm not feeling strongly about it, but as you know, it's an area of interest for me. I pay close attention. I'm happy to be. Is the. Is it somewhere high? Complementary? I think it's. I think this is correct. Oh, it'd be more like supplement. Oh, or so is it? Should it be complementary?
Where does it go?
It's under, like, complementary services. Complementary means free.
Oh.
Complementary means in addition, right? Oh, Chris, I think.
Where, where are you at?
It's the. It's at the very end.
Oh, complimentary.
Complementary services.
Free services. Oh, that's, that's, that's what that word means. But it's not, that's not everybody, that's you.
It should be complementary services.
This is one of those times where our board might be like.
And Neola.
In English, right? Uh, my family did buy me a grandma's shirt.
That's awesome.
Sorry.
Me too. Oh, another dictionary reader.
Oh, yeah.
Three dictionary readers on this air.
Yeah. I love every day.
Well, when I look it up, it says C-O-M-P-L-E-M-E-N-T-A-R-Y is, is completing.
Yes, so that would be like.
Can you just, give me the, can you give me the spelling you want here, C-O-M-P?
L-E-D. M-E-N-T, it's the only letter that changes the.
Yep, I got it, okay.
I think this is micromanaging.
Well, I mean, it has the thing, it looks like we're paid for students for free.
Right, right. This is where we're allowed to micromanage ourselves, right? And this is our policy. I feel, I feel. So, and I, I am not, you know, strongly bothered into any of these changes I'm proposing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to noodle for a second on D, "Services provided during class time must be approved by the teacher or building principal in consultation with the teacher and parent." Um.
I put that in there and I wasn't sure about.
So one of the wonderings, like, I'm just trying to run through scenarios in my head, and I think about, like. If there was an opportunity. For a student. To receive services not as maybe anticipated or scheduled, or we had to make an adjustment and be flexible. Would that violate that, right?
Right.
Like, if we had an altered schedule that day, and because I, I. Have services in your IEP that were to meet and have consultation every day, if I have to move that.
Right.
Does that, does that, does that? Does that cause an issue?
Right. I, I'm not sure about it, I'm not sure.
I don't know, that's the only, I'm just trying to run through those scenarios and think about that.
It seems to me that the parent is, is already apparently agreed that the student is participating in the IEP, and it's entirely possible, I would imagine, for them to say. Hard no, that my child did not miss that.
Yes.
And that would be just understood, but I don't know that we need to have that.
Right. I agree.
Yeah, and, well, so.
I, so, yeah, reject my. Reject my suggestion. Of lies.
I, I mean, like, during the IEP process, they, uh. They ask you if, you know, like, we're gonna push it to the classroom, right? So through that process, they say, okay, sure, they don't tell me when, they say it's okay, they say how many minutes, you know? And it's up to them.
Right, I just think about like the complexity of a counselor's day in a school in which things might arise that a schedule might not be able to be adhered to. Yes.
And you might have an emergent situation where someone needs support immediately.
Yep.
Right, yep. Totally get it.
Good.
So is this one you wanna take back to Neola?
Yep. And it will go for the, um, recommendations you have here. Um, with the striking of, um, with the consent of students' parents, cause that would have to happen, and then, um. Clarification around the necessity of having to restate and not being able to refer to policy. The subsequent policies for mandated reporting. And then, um, striking the and parent in D. And changing, um, complementary to complimentary.
Correct.
Yep, okay, I will, I will take those changes forward and just have them reviewed before bringing them back for approval. Okay. Alright, and the next policy that is up is around, um, food services. Um, and this policy is updated to streamline the dietary accommodations language and to reference the appointment of special dietary accommodations coordinator as required by regulations. Also added is a request, uh, grievance, uh, procedure related to disability-related dietary accommodations process, and a grievance procedure is required by federal regulation.
I have some questions.
Mm-hmm.
You could have some questions. Um, it may add a language that talks, uh. Or. Um. Oh, uh. The board, so under the nutrition standards, like the first few paragraphs, it talks about USDA smart snacks and school nutrition guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
And, um. I'm wondering if we actually are in compliance with that.
Yeah, so one of the key, the key pieces around the smart snacks component is that it's within the range of when breakfast is served. So anytime we're, we're serving that, so if you take a look at this and it says. "Any competitive food items and beverages are available for sale to students à la carte." Um. Do, do, do. Thirty minutes following the end of the school day, and then also. Um. Sold in compliance with board policy eight, um, five fifty, which is competitive food sales and vending machines, and in the com- the competitive food sales, I believe there's a policy that. Allots for something sitting outside of those, um, guidelines for smart snacks. Like, for two, I think for like two fundraising events a year. So like, if I'm a, a particular club, I could sell like cupcakes, right? Two times over the course of a year. Um, when we start to look at some of those snack policies and our wellness policy in comparison to that, I think some of our key pieces are really looking at the, like, looking at that and saying. We are not falling in, and I would argue, not within policy, sometimes with the amount of snacks that are served within classrooms.
Not even, I'm, I mean, uh, my daughter gets, uh, breakfast sometimes, and I entered in the label for like. Trick cereal or something, you know, to the smart snacks, and I was like. Like, I don't, I, you know, like.
Oh, the ones that we serve here, as part of the program, the ones that we serve as part of the program are, are USDA approved, yes, yes, yes. It's the supplementary, it's the supplementary type of snacks that occur in classrooms that fall outside of those guidelines. They can't be within that timeframe adjacent to the service of the approved snacks.
Okay. So like a list. Or how do we know that?
Um.
Also, you can follow.
I.
More of like a personal curiosity.
We would, I think we would have to zip into our wellness policy in particular to see if there's any, um, restriction around. Snacks.
I'm just gonna say that USDA. Restrictions have not been particularly.
Right.
And so, you know, like, years and years and years ago, St. Francis Children's Center revised, had something come in, they self-revised their menu. And ketchup became a question.
Right, that was the Reagan era.
Okay. And, yes. Yeah. Well, that's, I think, as the wellness work goes.
Does this policy impact things like PTO, ice cream socials that happen on school grounds, or? Parents bringing in cupcakes for birthdays? Things like that?
I'd say.
This policy is more written around the food service coming from our food service provider, right? Um, our wellness policy, as well as the other two policies that are referenced in here, we, if you're curious about that and we wanna take a look at those, they may be policies we want to examine, to make sure that we're in compliance.
It's right after, right?
Yeah.
Alright, um, in terms of the changes that are being proposed. Uh, does anybody have any comments or concerns about the Neola policy?
I'm just curious about under negative health balances.
Mm-hmm.
To exceed five dollars. I think that's. We changed. Does that have negatives then? Like, show, show me where that is.
So if. Yeah. So if you read in here, it says, "Students may be permitted to accumulate negative food service account balances not to exceed five dollars. A student shall not be permitted to purchase à la carte items without sufficient balance. Or cash on hand, likewise, any student that has a negative account balance may not purchase à la carte items with cash. Unless the student is also able to bring their account current." So, um, at, at Glen Hills, à la carte items are, they have, they sell like different sodas and, and some chips, like baked chips and things like that. So what this is saying is that, that if that account balance is negative, they can't purchase additional items. We do not, we do not not allow students to get a lunch, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think it says that. Were, were you thinking the number should be bigger?
No, I'm just not, I'm not clear that it says that they still get a lunch, it just says they are not permitted to accumulate a negative food service balance of five dollars, which is like.
Students may be permitted to accumulate not to exceed five dollars. It says that the district will provide meals to students with unpaid meal prices.
The line.
May means, it may means you don't have to.
If.
If it says shall. Right?
It says, in the third sentence below that, it says, "If a student has reached the permissible level of negative lunch counterbalance, they shall be provided a regular reimbursable meal that follows USDA meal pattern. The cost of which shall continue to accrue to a negative lunch counterbalance." Right? So they can continue to go negative and will not be denied food service. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Much better.
I, I still have to figure that out, honestly, I don't know.
So, I can, I can address, I can address that, um, we, yeah, um, we, we send, um. Part of our work in trying to clean some pieces up around some of our financial practices was looking at fees, and so we're sending regular lunch count balances out to families if they're carrying a balance. So they are receiving an email so that they can stay on top of current balances, and it also includes, um, the directions, if for, for example, a family. Um, maybe has lost their certification for free or reduced meals, it's a reminder to re, to like re-establish that, so they can continue to not have discontinuation in service. Yep.
That answers my question.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds like new changes to the Neola revisions are being proposed. Anybody wanna make a motion? I move to policy eight, I remember. Second. Should I go here, I'll second like Chris. Oh, little favor.
Aye.
Aye. I, I am in the interest of time, although there's not that much left, but. And I, perhaps we could start each discussion by first asking ourselves, are there any changes around our footrace?
Okay.
Make sure we get to that. Or any concerns with Neola, and then, and then the discussion, that work for everyone?
Yeah. Alright. The next policy is policy eight, five, one, zero, which is wellness, the policy is updated to include the Department of Agriculture's required non-discrimination statement, as well as a reminder, under the heading. "Policy Leadership: At Least One Choice Is Required For Compliance." These two changes were made pursuant to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction District audits, in which these requirements were identified by an auditor. In addition, the content of the entire policy was reviewed by a work group, which included members of the Department of Health Services, DPI, and the University of Wisconsin Health System. The resulting draft of all of this work was then further reviewed by Neola's Wisconsin-based legal counsel for proper legal compliance. So, um, I guess I'll ask the question, are there any recommended changes to this policy?
Would anybody? Are you still?
It's okay, it's okay, I move to approve the wellness policy.
It's okay, it's okay. I move to approve the wellness policy. No, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just remembering our last, the couple we talked about this. And I'm, this is mainly in Anna's wheelhouse, right, to create the committee, or to name people on the committee. And your idea, this is maybe like, uh, someday where you'd come back to us at the end of this year or next year with, or with updates, or kind of like, yeah, I'm just trying to remember your, your plan for the wellness.
For the wellness committee, we would need to establish a wellness committee to look at, um, the, the current wellness policy. I need to go back and look at where that sits on the board calendar. I believe it's, it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I think I remember.
Yeah.
So then, okay.
Yeah.
This is a policy that used to focus on obesity, right? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Still familiar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, who is the second on this?
Me.
All right. Thank you.
I'm very helpful.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any of us? Passes? You have adopted policy 8510.
Okay. All right, the next policy is free and reduced-priced meals, which has been revised to incorporate additional fed, federal regulatory requirements regarding student participation in the free and reduced meal program, and to add an option for districts that are part of community eligibility provisions, whereby a district or specific schools within the district can obtain free meal eligibility for all, um, all students for a four-year cycle. Um, this would mean that, um, the school or district needs certain requirements, typically sustained individual eligibility of meals that is twenty-five percent or more of the student population.
Any questions?
Mm-hmm.
It specifies free milk. Does that include like lactose-free milk for children? Can't, you have a medical condition?
Um, typically, we don't provide lactose-free milk, but there's usually a, um, a juice option.
So, we need to clarify, it's not just, no? Oh, it's right in the top.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. So if you don't drink the milk, you're also, you're, you're eligible for free juice. So that should, is milk. And doesn't include the parentheses. Is there reference to our medical, uh? That's an interesting question.
I apologize for having an issue with board docs right now, and it won't.
Yeah, you can, you can go on, and the chewed juice, so for that, you know. I think that's just more practice, but, or, but it would be like for qualifying students.
And/or appropriate, appropriate substitute.
Pursuant to policy, we have a dietary distribution.
Yeah. We just did it.
Mm-hmm.
Or another suitable beverage in compliance with.
Yeah.
Ah, right. Yeah. Like a parental medical.
Yeah.
Like after free milk, parentheses, or a suitable substitute that complies with.
Yep.
Sure. USDA safe snack and quality. Uh, I'm just thinking of one of the policies that was to get back to.
Yeah, there, that's food service, the food service of dietary modification.
Ah, right. Eighty-five hundred.
Yeah.
We're just sort of talking out loud, Anna. Are you following the mission?
I am, I am following. I'm now back into board docs that kicked me out for a second, so I'm back in. Um, you're looking at, "The board shall provide eligible children with breakfast and lunch at a reduced rate or no charge to the student, as well as free milk for qualifying students."
Right.
Free milk, or do you want to qualify or milk substitute?
Yeah, or, yeah, or, yes. Some phrase that indicates appropriate substitute that in compliance with Policy eighty-five hundred.
Okay.
Because you don't want to, to be just a preference, so I'd rather not.
It can't be a preference.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so that's gonna be.
So would that have to be repeated throughout this? It's that one?
Oh. You know what I'm wondering about? And let me, I can seek to get clarification on this, is when a student takes an entire meal, the, the drink is a part of the meal, right? So when you take a meal, what I'm wondering is if that qualifying piece is, as well as free milk, as if a student who qualifies for free or reduced brings a cold lunch and wants to get a milk, they can still get that for free? Because typically, we would charge for that.
Oh. That's, could you get clarification?
That's bad sense.
Yeah.
But there are also districts that they run a free milk program. That's what they probably was doing before they moved to an FDA program, they only offer, no, it's a separate program.
Right, so typically, right now, if, yeah, a student's lunch is not complete unless they take a milk or, or a milk substitute. If there's an, an allergen, sometimes they can pull that as a preference, too, I, I think. Oh, no, that substitutes a fruit otherwise. Um, but they, they can do that, but I think there are instances in which this child may just want milk, and we would typically charge a free or reduced cost to just purchasing milk, then I think is what that means. But I'll get clarification on that before approval.
That's actually a really interesting point, because MBS went to free breakfast, free lunch for everybody.
Yep.
But if you brought a lunch and you wanted a milk, you had to buy it.
Yep.
Yeah. That, that's what happened.
That's why I think this is an updated policy to address that.
So our goal here is just to make sure somebody qualifies for a free milk, would have access to a public bridge that would meet their dietary restrictions.
Okay.
In, right, compliance with Policy eighty-five hundred. Right? I think it's going above what is required.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But it's consistent with the pressure, of course, like, right?
Yeah.
And it says how.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to open the district up with the new class. I just know that there's a lot of people with lactose.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And water, and just so you know, water is a requirement to always have water available in like a cooler for students who would want to opt for that, too.
Sure.
It's part of food service.
As an allergy, I just know that sometimes that doesn't feel best to the kids, right?
Yeah. I understand. Okay, I can check on that one then? All right. And then, next policy is vending machines. Um, this, currently, we do not have any vending machines in our district. We did at one point in time, so I, in case we decided to go that route a different time, I think we should probably have a policy for it. Um, the policy is updated to include the, um, Department of Agriculture's required non-discrimination statement, and that update is made pursuant to an audit, in which the requirement was identified by the auditor. So, any recommended changes to this? Okay.
That's right. Danielle seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Will not exterminate. Well, that's an interesting question. There are, and I say, right, I was about to go there, so. The remaining policies, there are six more.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any comment? I've read through them. I don't. I don't. That's a, Could I move to approve the remaining policies? Eighty-five fifty, eighty-six hundred, eighty-six forty, eighty-six fifty-one, eighty-six sixty, eighty-six eighty, as revised by Neola. And eighty-six oh one. It, I mean,
I don't see eighty-six oh one.
I don't have eighty-six oh one.
Oh, it's really nice looking at the price.
I see it on,
I'm looking at a list that Anna created.
Yeah.
Of what, her names. Maybe we already paid eighty-six oh one.
So I'm not, believe that could not be, let's see what's, Yes, there's a motion pending to adopt policies, eighty-five, eighty, eighty-five fifty through eighty-six eighty on the Neolos. Right? The list that Anna, yeah, the list that Anna provided. Is there a second? Sorry. That was key. Discussion, Anna, how do you feel about this approach?
Um, I'm okay with this approach. I do want to know that eighty-six oh one was approved because it was renumerated and you already approved it.
Ah, right, we are, I thought that.
Yeah.
So we are looking at the remaining five policies, which is, I'm gonna write them down. Eighty-five fifty. Oh, right, percent, I'm sorry. Eighty-six hundred. Eighty-six forty. Neola six, sixty.
Some of them are rescinded policies.
Oh, okay.
Um,
Can I, wait, someone seconded that? You said? It's been seconded. Oh, so eighty-six forty, do we have to rescind it, or did we already?
No, you have not.
Right, right, I messed up, sorry.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the, uh, I would like to,
Second.
Propose that we would move to approve Policy eighty-five fifty, eighty-six hundred, eighty-six sixty, and eighty-six eighty, and rescind policies eighty-six forty and eighty-six fifty-one.
Yes. Second. I didn't vote? All right, so there is a motion to amend.
I second.
And there is a second. All in favor of the motion to amend?
Yeah, it says, oh, what is eighty-six?
Now, I'm very teeny, useless nonsense. There was no thing to, okay, well, I know, I didn't have a question, that's okay. So there's a motion to amend pending. Uh, all in favor of adopting the motion to amend? I think, aye, any opposed? All right, following Robert's rules, we're back to the original motion as amended, uh, which I think I've written down correctly. We're gonna, the motion is to adopt or policy to rescind two policies. Yeah, correct. Discussion? We're all, it's still gonna go faster.
Yeah.
When the confusion, it's still gonna go faster. Any discussion? We haven't, we haven't cleaned for you?
Clean enough. Good thing I'm recording it. I'll go back and review it to make sure I didn't make any errors in my notes.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, and I'm gonna put it in my role log here, clarify, the motion we are voting on now is a motion to adopt eighty-five fifty, eighty-six hundred, eighty-six sixty, eighty-six eighty, and to rescind eighty-six forty and eighty-six oh one.
No, eighty-six fifty.
Fifty. Ugh, almost, ugh. Eighty-six fifty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Policies are adopted. Woo. Thank you, Danielle. Well, we have just done a huge amount of work on policy. Anna, thank you for making that as easy as it could be for us.
Yes.
And, feel good?
Mm-hmm.
We are, we're up a hundred percent of the data.
All right, well, through the Neola model, I think there are policies that eventually, I think we will want to repeat.
Well, but I guess, oh, right.
It's fine.
We're, we're, it's fine. We're no longer in the nineties with our,
Yes.
Oh, yeah, all of our policies were back in June eighteenth, I think, was, we rescinded all old policies, adopted all new,
That's right.
Neola policies, so all of those are in place. Um, what these policies are, there was a list of technical corrections, which, as a superintendent, I approved those technical corrections, because they're just grammatical typically. And then you all need to review these policies to make sure that those legal edits meet the needs of our district. So we are now up to date and have, we'll be waiting for the next round that will come, so that, they will be coming.
You're still gonna have to break that.
Yeah, and there's a few that I'm gonna bring back.
Because we are unheard of cats. Every time any policy comes before us, one of us is looking at it, right, saying, "What else can we,
Yeah.
make better?" So I appreciate you honoring that and letting us go through that.
And, and there should be, I mean, we want to keep the integrity of the policy to protect us legally, but we also wanted to make it fit our local context, so that's important work to have happen.
Love it. All right, uh, moving on to school board updates. Just on here.
I think I went on there, this was the update from Katie.
Oh. Uh, so, what's the meetings? From what I gathered, they've been too few, they're, they're very into, um, we're, you do.
And I just,
Yeah. And that's the thing you do. And all the, so long. Anyway, so, yeah, so it's, it's all about advocacy. Right now, their focus is very heavy on funding. So they're trying to come up with like a triple that they can distribute to school boards, that school boards can then distribute to our representatives, um, to really like break down, because they're predicting a large turnover in representatives with this next election.
Right.
So, yeah, they want us to be able to easily educate the representatives, even ones who've been there for a while, on an actual state of, school funding in this area. Um, they're trying to put some stuff in about the, the mold metal emission.
Oh, the fire.
Yeah. Where they found, sorry, oh, my God. Um, didn't look at my notes. Uh, but, um, they want to put some stuff in about that, because that was very adept, that was non-artisan.
Right.
And it identified some huge flaws and failures, and nothing to stop them.
Right.
Um, so they want to make sure that, that the current representation understands that this was done, that it was agreed across the board, there are huge issues, and we haven't done anything. Um, and there was some stuff specifically about public schools being forced to pay for,
Yes.
um, special education costs for private schools and voucher schools. Yeah, it's, it's very, very heavy on funding, which, you know, speaks to our, I should do, I was like, can we get that triple to can use that there? But we're gonna, this is still a process, so.
And that would be great to, we try to have some, round up board members locally to go do some of that, as, join financing.
They're not, they're not, like, my rushes, they're not always organized meetings, but there's a lot of meat to them, usually, so.
Do you, do you know if they have a timeline for when they're creating tiers?
Soon.
Soon.
They have it. Because they, so they, um, at the last meeting, we were kind of workshopping them.
Yeah.
Uh, which is interesting to do, completely virtual. Um, but for those of us who can only attend virtually, it was about, and the next one is a hybrid meeting, where they're gonna do some in person and some virtually, those don't. Um, but, yeah, they're, they're pushing to have these out basically when the new people are started, they like to have these ready to go.
Yeah.
There are students that work on, um, strategic planning, which, they keep giving it like twenty-minute time slots, and that is just never enough, so I, that's gonna be a big mission, a vision.
What else?
For themselves, which would have been helpful to have in places of, because I just walked in. But, uh, yeah, so, they're, they're doing really good work. It's, uh, a lot of super tendents, which I feel like is helpful, because they know it differently than board members.
Right.
Um, so, that's helpful. But I mean, there's a lot of board members there, I feel like I've got, I've learned the most, there's some business managers, so, and, um, some of them have recently passed referent, a lot of them are in the same place that we are, so it's, it's a good mix, and then here's what worked, and here's what didn't. It's been, um, education. I, I attend while I'm driving to work, so. It's, uh, yeah. And then, and then I text Anna, when she can't make it, I text her, and that's kind of my, how I lock into my brain, is, here's what, here's what happened.
But not while you're there.
Obviously.
Right.
He goes into work and lock, and clock in, I do it. But,
Right now, the, the meetings have been running concurrent with our, also, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce meeting, so we've, it's been sort of a divide and, and conquer opportunity for Katie and I, and then I, and conquer o- opportunity for Katie and I, and then I usually touch base with Dr. Kubmaro as well, who attends.
They, they put us into a breakup. But she, I don't think she's doing it on purpose. It's just how she kind of throws us together, so then I'm like, well, here's what Dr. Kubmaro said. I thought that was like slightly different than what we had heard in our room, so did she like check in with that? And she does. It's a good, it's a good team effort.
Thank you.
Can I have an impromptu report?
Sure, related to the referendum.
Yes, it's on. Uh, I, I was at, before this meeting, I went to the, uh, monthly Wisconsin Public Education Network meeting, which was hosted at Sherman High School. Um, and so there were a lot of people there talking about these, the referendums, as they call it. Um, and they mentioned that Swiss is going to create encographics that are showing, uh, money. The money that's like basically going to private charter schools, that funding versus, uh, public schools, like very clearly. Um, and like sort of the verb, the, uh, that's right, word, that public schools bear for meeting the needs of kids that they don't have. Uh, and I think there are some early drafts out, so we may have access to those maybe before the election, which would be helpful. Um, they shared, and I'll, I can share some of those offline too, but, um, Chris Larson released a, uh, press release, which looked at, um, the special education funding gap that arise in referendums. And lists every district going to referendum. Have you seen this?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Have you guys seen this? It's just a paper copy, so I was like, where, 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 right? But, but the statewide total, the cost of the operating referendums this fall is three hundred and thirty-six million dollars approximately. And the total unreimbursed special education costs for the prior year, twenty-two, twenty-three, was two hundred and forty-two billion some dollars. So the percent of referendum you can attribute to unreimbursed special education costs statewide is seventy-two percent.
Oh, my gosh.
In Glendale specifically, it really doesn't. So in Glendale, they take our referendum ask for this year, four million five hundred. Uh, our unreimbursed costs sit for the prior year at two million five hundred, and that comprises fifty-six percent of our, um, our referendum.
I feel like there's some information that may be outdated or.
Right, right, and, yeah, and our, our aide came up too as well, which is.
Yeah.
So that was interesting. I also ran in, I talked to, um, Aaron Madison. Uh, and I talked to him about possibly collaborating once we do our advocacy workshop. And he's, uh, you know, having to like tell us what works, what doesn't, you know, kind of thing. He said Turner's does some training, and perhaps we could all partner. And he'd be happy to, so I'm gonna follow up, I can follow up with him. Um, yeah, it was a very great, a great meeting. There's a lot of, I think there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for advocacy for us, and people are fancying to it, so, uh, I think.
Advocacy not about our referendum.
Advocacy about a state of funding and public.
Just clear, is right, like, for anyone who's listening, that we're not talking about advocacy about our referendum.
Thank you for, for clarifying that.
But rather about a broader state level.
Advocacy around increase of reimbursement for spend costs, uh, equitable, adequate, transparent, predictable, fair state funding. Uh, and then, um, accountability for public dollars and a moratorium on private voucher spending. Uh, so, I mean. Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Thank you both for sharing. Thank you. Got the energy. And I also did something just about, about the, um, huge states. What is it?
Well, I thought it's, isn't it still about seven, like, it was like four point six and five point zillion? So it's still about six or seven billion.
Yep. Yep. Alright. Anything else? Thank you, everyone, on the referendum front for continuing to share out information. You know, you're doing a lot of canvassing and, uh, I appreciate.
Not as a school board member.
Not as a school board member. Well, but we are also sharing information as school board members. Thanks, everyone, for showing up to events. I know we're all working. So, well done, yay. Uh, alright, on to meeting closing. Review of to-do items. Um, I have a question about this standing element of our agenda. Do we still need it? A to-do item list? Now that our board calendar is being managed effectively and updated as things come up, this used to be a tool we used to kind of prevent loss of items. Where we would ask for something to be on the future agendas.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Loss, so I have, I have just posed this question, do we still need this agenda item on here? Um. Well, as something that we.
Is that a future agenda item? Because, well, I, I would go a step further and say that I look at this, uh, agenda, and I think you have plans like this anyway, but I, I think there are other areas where you could tweak or make more efficient categories and tie them to strategic planning, all of that, so.
Yeah, this meeting's closing, I mean, we've got three items on here, to-do, future agenda, board meeting debrief, often it doesn't, it just makes the agenda look long.
Right.
I don't know what it should look like.
Look at Nicolay's, I actually, since I was at the meeting the other night, it, their board closing is maybe one item, but it encompasses for discussion or feedback or comments or something, and some, you know, like, it's just a kind of a moment, I think, to. Yes, I think, I think there's some other other ways we can come up.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm curious if there are other people's spots on. I think if there was a, should, should, I think there was a to-do, we can include the agenda. In that. Yeah, but I, I also feel, if I felt like we needed to talk about something, I would feel completely comfortable just emailing.
Right.
Or Anna, or.
Yeah, it, it seems to me like we created this because there was an adequate carryover. And we no longer have that issue.
But is future agenda topics in Neola policy, or was that our whole policy?
I think that was a whole last week. But I can look at that. So you, it sounds like everyone would be comfortable with kind of tightening this up, so you don't have to and just make it more of a comment. Like a rounded. You could even call it a board rounded and keep.
Or something like during the debrief, if there's something that we feel like should be a to-do item, we just say, hey, should we throw this on the calendar? This is the calendar function, the calendar functions, and then the living thing, and it's actually all of the care for now, so, very good, if you're right.
Okay, then I will work with Anna to tighten this and get us heater at the end, especially as we start to put in times, right, just to see. Hannah's been working on getting time slots for us, um. If you put like five minutes for each agenda, it's like, um, fill up, fill up hours, right? It's, it just starts to look longer than it actually is. Yeah, we only need like five. Alright, good.
I did have a question. Like, do we have the school board calendar posted anywhere on the school board site?
Um, can you clarify?
You mean the board work calendar?
Yes.
It would be great to have that on the board webpage, right, but I don't know, it's like.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, um, I took a sample calendar from somebody and feel like I'm living with it this school year to revise it and to refine it, and in my first year of superintendency, would like the opportunity to, to clean it up a little bit before we move into a space um, where we have that. I think as we work through our policies, there's some key, um, reporting options that I'll, I'll provide an example. So, for example, you received, um, information about the career education programming that we do at Glen Hills. And you approved it, and so that was something that was done in November of last year, it really should be happening earlier in the cycle, so what we're gonna have to do is probably bring it forward to you. Have you look at it, approve it for this year, and then prove it again for next year in really quick fashion, so just making sure all of those things are synced. And I'm, I, I think working through that right now is, um, some key areas. Um, Michelle and I have also talked about refining some of the cycle around how we get to budget and having some things come forward a little bit earlier prior to October, so that we can get information to the public in a more timely manner. So I would say it's a very rough draft right now. I would like time to refine it before posting.
And the most recent version is titled Board Calendar, December twenty twenty-three.
No, 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 that's a, that's a, that's a prior. It was something shared in, uh, one of Anna's.
It's a note, I can reshare it with you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, and I, it's hard for me to find.
I know, I just have a hard time finding things.
Fair, I have a hard time when she. I don't know what she. Yeah, what's happening when, um, we build agendas, like, if we're in the same room, Anna has this document that she's working with that was a good starting point from another
Right.
district, and then we're sort of saying, okay, this is for us, this isn't for us, this is for us, and sort of building that.
I just wanted to be able to like.
I don't know that I, I just.
You have to go back. Like everybody's like the board calendar, they're so excited, I'm like, I can never find this, and I finally, because I, I felt like I needed to. My brain is.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, although, I mean, any board calendar will change from year to year, its laws.
Yep.
Right, all that, and yeah, it'd be approved. Oh, you would be approving it, incredibly.
It, you would be approving the, the dates of the calendar, not necessarily the topic and agenda items, just because there's gonna have to be some variance. Yeah.
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 Alright. Question, anything else? Future agenda topics? Board debrief? Hour and a half.
Yeah.
We lanced to this boil. Agenda item six A is all that's left. Part in chronal moves to adjourn. Second, Danielle Bailey, just be shaggy objects, but actually, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.